The time is now six o'clock. I want to call the April 17th Planning Board Meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. We have a new member with us, James Motley. Welcome.
Thank you.
And you're here in present? Thomas?
Yes, I'm here in present too.
Tim is here, Cindy is here, Joe and William is also here. Next item is approval of minutes from the February 21st meeting. Does anyone have any changes to be made? Mr. Motley did have some grammatical changes for you. But I don't think anything that would change the content. So if we can approve maybe as suggested?
I asked me to last month if we could approve of any.
Okay. Is that a motion for any of that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Aye or say aye. First item for consideration is of a request to amend the conditional zoning master plan for an undeveloped parcel located on Sherwood Drive, Rockingham County Parcel 184284. Jason.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members. Elam Freeway LLC attesting to amend the conditional zoning master plan that was recently approved by the City Council back in July of 2023 for an undeveloped parcel located off of Sherwood Drive. It's Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 184284. The parcel is zoned, conditional zoning, residential six, CZR six. The amendments that they're proposing to the approved conditional zoning master plan include a reduction in the front yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet. The first reason is for provision of a 50-foot easement for a greenway. So we have a greenway planned to the rear of this property. It's Phase Three of the Sherwood Trail that's across the street on Sherwood.
I run it. I wish I could, I run it. So I wish, I'd be loving to, yeah, we could go, keep going, yes.
In our plan, we plan three phases. The second one goes northwest. It hasn't been developed yet. This is the Phase Three that goes southwest along existing sewer easement. So they have agreed as a condition of their conditional zoning plan to provide a 50-foot easement for construction of a future greenway that will be dedicated to the city. So the city will take the easement and at some point in the future, when we have funding, it will work toward getting it built. So the second justification, we find the reduction in the front setback reasonable because Council actually approved last year a reduction in the front setback for the R-12 district from 35 feet to 25 feet. So right now, the front setback in the R-6 district, which is actually higher density and smaller lots, is 30 feet. So it's kind of a little, but that was an applicant who requested that. So we're going to fix that in the UDO, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So the parcel encompasses an area of 26.27 acres. The applicant is Elam Freeway LLC and the owner is Cable Enterprises LLC. So a conditional zoning request amends the zoning map with site-specific conditions. So basically, all they're asking for is just to make those two changes to the approved plan. Nothing else is changing. There's no change of use proposed, no change of density. So the reduction in the front setback and the greenway easement will be tied to the plan as a part of the zoning. So those are the only proposed changes to the plan. And per Article 5, Section 1 of the reasonable zoning ordinance, this has to come back before the Planning Board and Council because any alteration to an existing development standard or increase in density, anything major, has to come back before Planning Board and Council to approve. Staff can only approve minor changes, so this is not a change that staff can approve. So that's why it's back before you. The property is located in Growth Management Area Number Three in the reasonable land development plan of 2022. It aligns with Goal Number Three of the land development plan, which is primarily to expand residential development and a variety of housing, and Goal Number Five, which prioritizes facilities, parks, and trails for active living, including expanding the city's greenway system. So it aligns both with those. And Growth Management Area Number Three, which I didn't touch on, it's prioritized for a mixture of residential and commercial development. So it aligns with the Growth Management Area. The proposed conditional rezoning is in line with the surrounding land use. Like I said, there's no proposed change to land use. It's only single-family units. So I think it's 48 in the plan. If I'm not mistaken, it's in your packet though. You can see that it's just single-family homes. And therefore, the planning staff recommends proposed rezoning application be approved. And I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
We don't hear from them.
Does anybody want to speak for or against?
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this case?
Hey, my name is Tim Shaw. I'm with Hagan Engineering and we worked on the design plans. And Jason kind of went over all the main points, but just wanted to kind of get up here and say that we're hoping to provide, you know, work with the city to provide this greenway easement, to provide a good, great product. And we think that the 20-foot, you know, front setback is kind of a standard for a lot of cities now, especially in that higher density. So we think it'll provide a really good-looking product. And just wanted to say, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
What kind of houses you going to put on these lots?
Single-family houses.
One-story, two-story?
Yeah, two-story. I don't know if we have the final elevations, but we can have our, yeah, two-story, but we can have our developer kind of send you some elevations. We're just working on the civil design.
I left my marinades at home, buddy. If you can pick up a little.
No problem. Yeah, we just handle the civil design part of it. You know, we're not actually the architect, but we can have the developer send you some architectural plans if you'd like.
One question. Do you have any idea yourself of the price range of these houses?
I do not have an idea of that.
Okay, we'd be interested in that also.
Okay, we'll have the developer reach out to, probably to Jason directly.
Just so you know, those are not really things that we look at in rezoning. So, you know, I'm just, it's not really something that we, you know, we're looking at land use, just the use is appropriate. It's not really the design of the single-family homes. The state statute actually prohibits us from having standards for single-family and two-family homes. So, and price, so decisions legally can't be made through the State Housing Act over the cost of homes. So I just remind you those are state statutes, and you're making your decisions.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, you just kind of want to think of those folks that's got high-priced homes that this is going to be in the middle of is what reason, good question.
Yeah, well, we don't want to go back to the disaster we were in before, that's for sure.
Does a traffic analysis come in, please? A traffic analysis.
The proposed plan was always for four-year homes, I believe, so we did not feel that this was a significant traffic impact or required today for this project because it was well less than 100 half that.
96 cars.
Are there any more questions? Are there any more questions for? Sorry, I forgot your name.
That's Tim.
Tim. Any more questions for Tim?
I'm happy about the greenway.
I am. Yeah, we'd see it. Thank you guys.
I'm a runner and I use the greenway, so I'd love for it to be more connected.
Anyone else speak for or against? Okay. Great. Is there any more discussion from the board?
Anything? Discussion amongst, is any other discussion for the board amongst each other?
No. It just bothers me to put small houses in there. Where the cheapest one on that street's 300 and something thousand, you know?
Kind of the opposite. I think we need more affordable housing, so kind of the opposite on that one, but that's, that's fine. Yeah. But that doesn't matter. That's neither here nor there.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
My second.
Those have been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. On to one.
All right. Here's a kissy. All right. Now for the hard work.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, guys.
Next item is the UDO Annotated Outline Public Forum.
Let's set it back up again. All right.
Good evening. Hard work. Come on, this is fun. So.
Actually, I've been, I missed the last one because I broke my foot. So I am actually been very excited about this. So I've been studying all day.
Well, thank you very much. I am Chad Meadows. I am Principal of Code Right Planners and we are back before you tonight to talk about the next step in the new UDO, which is our annotated outline. And so I'd like to take the next 25 or 30 minutes to overview the document with you, talk about, you know, what's in there. Stop me with any questions at any time and I will do my level best to answer your questions. From there, we'll talk about next steps. And you mentioned that the hard work starts now. No, but the hard work is going to be starting. We have, we're a couple of months behind schedule and so we're going to try to make up some of that time in the, you know, over the course of the summer. And so everybody's going to share in that a little bit, but we'll talk more about that when, at the end. Without, I'll go ahead and get started.
Any questions?
And walk you through overviewing of the code assessment or the annotated outline. Okay, ready?
Ready.
All right. So I'm going to talk about the project background first. Every time you see me, I'm going to talk about the project goals, just so that everybody is always, you know, bored with, this is what we're doing and why. I'll talk generally about, you know, what the annotated outline is, what it is, what it does, why we prepare it. Then I'll talk about the main sections of the 10 articles that comprise the document. If you guys have any other questions at that time, we'll talk about it, but please don't wait till then. If something comes up along the way, love to have that discussion and the next steps. Okay? So these are the project goals. You heard us mention these during the code assessment presentation. They haven't changed. You're going to get to hear them again the next time we come back because they're the same goals. And that is to make the UDO more user-friendly, easier to navigate, easier to understand. We want to focus on increasing prosperity. What does that mean? That means, you know, more employment, more retail opportunities, more housing choice, et cetera. So focusing on prosperity is an important part of this. Implementing your adopted policy guidance, your land development plan. You know, this is who we want to be when we grow up. That's a new plan and we're implementing the policies that are included therein. Obviously, broadening housing options, not just attainable housing, but other choices. People's preferences for housing are changing all the time. And not everybody wants a single-family home with a picket fence. You know, we are trying to, you know, recognize that our society has a wide array of housing needs. And, you know, Redsville's ability to accommodate that is going to put you in good stead in terms of your economic competitiveness with the communities that you, you know, compete with. Easier to develop downtown. And that's an interesting one and we're going to talk a lot about that, probably not so much tonight, but I think that's an interesting aspect for us. You know, easier according to who, downtown means what, development is, well, I'm not sure. So, you know, there's, there's a, there's a great, there's a lot of information for us to talk about downtown, but essentially, the idea is this. You guys have a beautiful downtown in this community and while it's a little long in the tooth, that doesn't mean that it's, you know, down and out. And how do we leverage some improvements in your downtown and some vitality and bringing some businesses back into the, you know, the beautiful buildings and, you know, the blocks and the sidewalks and the open spaces that you guys have? And, and helping sort of revitalize downtown Redsville, that's a very important part of this. The code is not going to be a silver bullet on that point. In fact, the best that we can hope for honestly is getting the code out of the way so that other forms of, of economic development and incentive and actions that the city is taking can be effective. Okay? Just because we put something in a code doesn't mean that, you know, there's going to be a floodgate, we're going to have, you know, development barreling into town. It just doesn't work like that. Finally, ensuring consistency, you know, with state law, with court precedent. The state laws are always changing and that will continue throughout this process and after. We'll continue to have adjustments to the regulations. Don't think about your UDO as a set it and forget it kind of a thing. This document is always going to be, you know, in play. It's always going to be in motion and you're always going to be, you know, turning this aisle or moving this lever. And you guys as planning board, that's really going to become, you know, one of your main functions in the development process is the keeper of these regulations and the fine tuner with staff of how to make sure that the regulations are resulting in the kind of development that you want. Okay? So that's the, that's the frontier for you guys. Those are our project goals. They haven't changed and they'll stay consistent as we go. Project tasks. There's six tasks in the project. We've done project initiation. We completed the code assessment. We were before you a couple of months ago. We talked about the code assessment and now we're here talking about the annotated outline. And so we're almost complete. This is the last element of the annotated outline, which is to present this to you, to the public, answer questions. And I want you to know, you know, if there's elements of the document that we need to revise, that's great. We're happy to do that. Once we've gotten the document where we want it, it'll go on the project webpage and we'll begin to use this information to draft the code in Task Four. As I mentioned at the head of the conversation, we're a couple of months behind. That's okay. We had to, we had to kind of take a step back and spend a little bit of time with the elected officials to make sure that we're all on the same page about a handful of questions. And that was done last month, but it's all good and it was an important meeting and, you know, it's going to allow us to continue to move forward at a better pace. So, a couple of months behind, but it's not a fatal flaw and we will stay on schedule. Our objective is to finish this project in December of this year. Okay? So a little bit of heavy lifting to come, but we'll try to make it as easy as possible on you guys. Right? More about that in a moment. Okay, remember, code assessment, that was the gap analysis. What we're doing was trying to understand, what does the city policy say? What do the regulations say? How do we need to amend the regulations to bring us closer to city policy? Okay? That was the code assessment. It was trying to understand that gap between what the policy says, what the regulations say. How do we change the regulations to bring those into closer alignment? Right? That was the code assessment. It was a framework for discussion about what needs to change. We had a series of about 46 recommendations for improvement and revision to the regulations in order to bring the new UDO into alignment with, you know, policy goals, court precedent, state law, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that was that document and the code assessment forms the framework for the annotated outline. Remember the seven recommendations and they're kind of similar to the project goals. Right? We want to implement policy guidance, make it sure it's easy to use, make sure the development review procedures are efficient and predictable, you know, incentives, greater flexibility wherever we can, revitalizing downtown, modernizing districts and uses, bringing the code into the modern age in terms of our tools and techniques that we include, and then obviously broadening the range of housing options. Those were the seven recommendations from the code assessment. Okay? Let's talk about the annotated outline. Any questions up to this point? Okay. So annotated outline, think about this thing as, you know, the dress rehearsal for your UDO. It's, it's, it's no longer a roadmap or a blueprint. We're not so much in the conceptual realm anymore. We're starting to move into the, hey, this is what it's going to look like. These are the sections and this is what's going to be in here and here is the numbering and all of that stuff. So we're getting closer and closer to, to what the document will be. We've also built on and refined some of the recommendations that were set down in the code assessment. Remember those seven recommendations I just mentioned? We've incorporated those. They're sprinkled and woven through the fabric of the document and that'll continue. You know, we've also laid out the format for you and I'll talk more about that in a moment, but this annotated outline is really a dress rehearsal for your ordinance. The pages that you see in this document, the numbering, that's what your UDO is going to look like. It's going to be bigger, but you know, that's the gist of it. It sets down the articles and the section organization. There's a lot of information about procedures. There's a lot of information about the districts that we suggest be considered and there's a lot of information about the proposed uses. Remember that big table that's in there with all of the uses? We've also got an exploration of the proposed development standards like parking, landscaping, and signage and lighting. Not a ton of detail, but starting to introduce those concepts and those aspects to you for your, for your thought and, and rumination as we go forward. So that's what this annotated outline does, dress rehearsal for the UDO. Okay? So let's talk about some of the document bases. 10 articles in this document. Okay? And they're listed on your screen. We're going to talk about each and every one of them. The one thing that I want to point your attention to is that generally speaking, we have tried to organize information in this document in an alphabetic sequence. Okay? So the chapter titles are in alpha order. The main sections in each article are in alphabetic order. So you don't necessarily need to know where everything is, you just need to know the alphabet. And you guys are pretty much on target there. So that is some of the organizational context within which we're, we're trying to operate. Again, making it easy to get around the document, whether that's a digital version or a paper version. Okay? Couple of other things to talk about. This, this slide shows the image on the left side of the screen that says Heading One. That is just a quick synopsis of the style set of the document. In other words, that's how the text is organized. Okay? The headings have different colors. Some of them have different backgrounds. Some of them are underlined and you see the indentation scheme there. And so that is set up to help people understand the relationships between the text. So every section has a heading or a series of headings, a series of subheadings, and body text located below it. And we've attempted to use color and size and font, typeface to help enforce or reinforce those relationships in the text. Okay? Nothing substantive here, just, this is kind of the thought process about how the text lays out on the page. Section 12 of this document will not be included in the UDO, but we wanted you to have the ordinance conventions. What in the heck is that? That stuff is the rules for punctuation, the terminology that we're going to use. Are we doing Oxford commas? Is it two spaces after a period? Are we capitalizing the word city or not? Those kinds of conventions are set down for you in this Chapter 12, Pages 138, 139, just so you've got that information at your disposal. It's as much for us as it is for you as we're drafting this thing and we're like, oh my gosh, what do we call, it's not Board of Alderman, it's City Council.
Right, exactly. And so these conventions are helpful in thinking through, you know, how, what are the conventions that we're following in the document? Again, not intended to be included in the adopted UDO. This is for review purposes only. Okay? Couple of other things to call your attention to. This document includes an About This UDO section at the very front. This is not codified language. This is supportive information for somebody who picks up the document. It talks about what's in here. It talks about how it's organized. It talks about some of the, the things that you see in the document, like the headers and the footers and when, when there's stuff text in gray fields, what does that mean? And the fact that you can click on Table of Contents entries and be taken to that section. So just kind of some basic information about how the document is built and some of the functionality that's included in it in case you weren't around when we were drafting it. So that's what this is about. This section lends itself very nicely to evolution into a series of frequently asked questions, if you'd like to do that. Some local governments propagate this About This UDO section with frequently asked questions like, do I have to get a permit to build a deck? What if my neighbor's grass is 18 inches tall? What about that junk car next door? What if I want to change my sign? Those kinds of frequently asked questions are great to put in this kind of piece of a UDO. It allows people to answer some of the questions on their own, to do a little bit of research, preserve some of your staff resource so they're not constantly answering the same questions. So while this current About This UDO does not incorporate these FAQ, it could. All your staff needs to do is ask us to, you know, put that in and we'll get started there. And this can be, you know, 10 questions or it can be 100 questions. It's really up to you guys. Again, this is not codified, so we're not, you know, this isn't subject to the public theory rules and all of the bureaucracy that flows from a regulatory document. It's intended to be helpful to people who might use the document. Okay? On the right side of the screen, you see something called UDO amendments. That's a summary table. That table will become extremely important to you in the future. That is how you will track the amendments that you're going to make to this document. Over the course of time, you guys will make amendments and that table summarizes when the ordinance amendments were made, what their number was, and some brief summary information about what kinds of things we changed.
When you say you guys, you mean, you're from the north, aren't you? Like me. Anyway, when you say you guys, it's like, when there is amendments, is that just a completely a staff situation or is that something that the planning board would work on?
Good question. So the text amendment process is one that's handed down to us by state law. Okay? Text amendment applications can flow from anyone. They can be from anybody in the city or from staff or from you. The process is always the same, which is staff prepares the language.
Okay.
They bring it to you for review and consideration. You will make a recommendation about, is this appropriate or not? And is it consistent or not with the, you know, your land use plan? And then City Council will make the ultimate decision about, do we wish to adopt this or not?
Okay. Thank you.
Just like you.
Just like you.
Okay, that's what I figured. I just, I was just, I was just.
Everybody knows it that way now.
Okay.
But not.
Everybody has a really cool table of amendments that allows you to track it.
Okay.
So you'll be, I, I know from past experience that this table will be one that you're very happy that you have because somebody will say, what's happened since this document was adopted in December of 2024? Because that's when we're going to adopt it, hopefully. And you'll be able to open your document to page four and get a complete listing of what's changed over the course of time. Very, very helpful. Okay?
Good question.
Sure.
You're consultant, so my question is, you're a consultant at the city, right?
I am. I am.
Okay. That means that you have put together this model and have presented this to other municipalities for their consideration.
I have.
Okay, so you've done this before.
Once or twice. This is my 28th or 29th development code.
Great, great, okay. I guess the question I'm getting to is this, Reedsville has certain particulars about itself that I'm asking the question whether or not lets factor into your history with other municipalities may mirror Reedsville's history and trajectory in terms of growth and all that.
Sure.
Is that factored in here?
Absolutely, and it's a great question. And I, I don't want to go off into planner nerd land, which I could, which I'm apt to do, so I'm going to kind of, I'm going to try to answer that as succinctly as I can. You know, you guys have your land use plan and there's also a, a Blue Ways and Green Ways plan that we spent a lot of time studying.
To pick up on what are the things that the community says that it wants.
In addition to that, we did a series of stakeholder interviews with project stakeholders that were identified by your staff about, you know, what are the things that we need to be focusing on? In addition to that, we spent time with your elected officials talking about the issues of importance for us to address. In addition to that, we've been before you with the code assessment, which summarized, you know, the, the, the main issues to address and, and the things that we wanted to tackle and the things that we chose not to tackle with this project. And so hopefully, you know, you, if, if you look at the arc of the project, you can see that we're, there's sort of been this slow additive building sort of steps where we talk to more and more people as we go. We get clearer and, and more tightly defined vision about the direction and, and absolutely you cannot help but.
Recognize.
Some of the, the particular aspects of Reedsville as you move through that process. Now, having said that, a good idea is a good idea is a good idea. And if there is a good idea from a comparable community, we're going to recommend it for you. It's up to you whether you guys decide to, to, to use that idea or, or take that on board. Most of the time, when there are good ideas like that, there are subtle changes and adjustments to them to fit the local government where we're applying them. But, you know, I believe when I tell you, we do not reinvent the wheel. A lot of the language that we've drafted has already been through 27 municipal attorneys and that's.
Do you want, do you want it to be tested and legal and make sure that it's a sorry check?
Sure, no, you're, you're, I mean, that's, that's why that there, it would be crazy for us to reinvent the wheel when we've got this kind of body of knowledge that we can build on. But I'll say one more thing and then I'll be quiet about this. And I, and I'm passionate about it, which is why I want to mention it. The, the, one of the greatest things about this job is sharing with people like you options for you to consider about how other communities similar to you have tackled to similar kinds of problems. That's what's fun about this job, if you, if you can believe that. And so, you know, we, we take that very seriously and, and try to have dialogue and share with you our thoughts and, and happily take yours on board in, in pursuit of an evolved, cleaner, better approach, if that makes any sense at all. That's, that's what drives us is, you know, making sure that we always are getting better. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure. That was probably much longer answer than you wanted. I apologize for that.
An answer, thank you.
Okay, so a couple of the things about the document itself. You see on the right, that's the cover page for the table of contents for chat for Article One. Each article has a summary table of contents. On the digital version, you'll be able to click on those, on those links and it'll take you right to that page in the document. What I wanted to call your attention to was the table at the bottom, which is currently empty and it's called key changes in the new UDO. That's a very, very important table. And what you will see when the drafts of the document come before you is that table will be, will be propagated with information about how and in what ways this draft code that you're looking at differs from, from your current regulation, okay? New things we've added, things we've taken away, things we've changed because of some other part of the code or some change to court precedent or some change to state law or what have you. So those key change summary tables are vital. They, they don't make it into the final codified adopted version of the UDO. They are for review purposes, but you will find them, I hope, to be invaluable. They help organize the information as we go forward and you'll see my subsequent presentations on the draft UDO focus primarily on key changes between what you've got today and how we're suggesting that be revised, okay? Okay. On the right side, that's the administrative adjustment procedure. That's what your code is going to look like. That is a really good example of, you know, a standard run of the mill page that you might see, you know, in your UDO. And hopefully you can see some of the graphic elements that we incorporate, some of the tools and techniques that we use to help people navigate the document and understand the relationship of the text, okay? Questions about kind of document basics? Okay. Here we go. Ten articles, I'll do my best to cover these as quickly as we can because I know this is not exactly edge of the seat stuff. Article One is your administration article, okay? Think about this as your legal boilerplate, all right? This is our effective date and our document title and our statutory authority, but it also has some other important pieces to it like the review authority provisions, the powers and duties for the various review authorities who are responsible for making decisions under the UDO are set down in Article One Administration. The transitional provisions, okay? We can't stop the world. You guys have applications in process as we're going through this document. When adoption time comes, there will be, you know, applications that have just been submitted but aren't complete, applications that are complete but haven't been decided, applications that have been submitted and reviewed but not decided, applications that have been decided but haven't started and construction projects that have started but aren't finished. How are we going to handle that suite of different kinds of applications and development status that's set down for you in the transitional provisions? Finally, the vested rights provisions, which to be fair are dull and boring and very much legalese, but also very, very important. Vested rights are intended to protect applicants who have development approvals but are not finished with their development and.
The city of C could.
Change the rules before they finish their development application. How will we treat those already approved applications that are not yet finished when the rules change? That's what the vested rights provisions do, okay? So again, Article One, boilerplate, how do we kind of handle the legal aspects that come with.
To do on the code.
That's what Article One is about, all right? Everybody good? Told you it's not edge of the seat stuff. Article Two, applications. This is a consolidated chapter that incorporates all of the application provisions, okay? So there are 36 different, 36, 37 different kinds of applications that this UDO addresses. They are set down for you in this summary table. They're listed down the side. There are, there will be digital, you know, cross references to jump right to those sections, information about whether or not pre-application conferences mandatory or optional or not applicable. It sets down for you the, the various review responsibilities, whether that's comment, recommendation, decision or appeal, and the various review authorities who make those recommendations decisions and consider those appeals, all right? Also information about whether the hearing is a public hearing or a public meeting and whether if, if it is a public hearing, whether it's legislative or quasi judicial. So tons and tons of information in this table that you will go back to time and time again to understand the relationship of, of how different development applications operate. And remember, you know, in many cases, a lot of applications have multiple parts to them, right? I might want to do a development that's going to require me to do a rezoning, a subdivision plat, a site plan, maybe a variance and a zoning permit. And, and how do those different pieces work together? What's the sequencing? All of that information is covered in Article Two for each application procedure. Every application procedure we use has a standardized format. We talk about the purpose and intent. We talk about the applicability, the exemptions, the decision maker, the process, the review criteria, how that decision is amended.
How does it expire?
If it does expire. How does that relate to vested rights and how does that relate to development phasing?
Or other kinds of simultaneous processes.
So we cover that for each and every application type in the book. So the idea here is use uniform standardized language and, and follow the same structure each time, right? So that people begin to understand what the rules say and how they operate. When I travel, I go to McDonald's. Why do I go to McDonald's? Because I know what to expect because I've been to a McDonald's somewhere else, okay? This is the same concept. Regulations are set down in a uniform manner so that everybody can understand what to expect, okay? Now, one other important part of Article Two is section 24, the application review procedures. And I know this stuff is kind of dry, so just hang with me, guys. A lot of development codes these days include multiple repetitive information about public notice and how public hearings are conducted and how the staff report gets prepared and who that goes to. And that material should not be repetitive. Repetition is our enemy because that allows inconsistency to creep in and we don't want inconsistency because that can bring us confusion and possibly legal challenge. So how do we deal with repetition? We say something once, that's it, and we cross-reference it. And that's what 24 is all about. That's the place where we set down.
How do you file?
An application. What if a pre-application conference is required? How does the staff report get prepared? What about public notice? How does the hearing process work? How does the notice of decision work? What happens if I want to withdraw or continue? All of that sort of generic application related information set down in, in section 24, okay? It's exciting stuff, isn't it? It is a, a great leap forward for you. This kind of rigid organization and predictability will help your applicants understand the rules of the game. And, and it's very important that we be uniform and also frankly, try to be as comprehensive as we can. Okay? All right. Article Three, configuration. This is the big stuff, okay? This is when you think about your, your UDO, your development regulations, your development standards, this is the stuff, okay? Couple things to note right off the bat. You see 3 dash 1, article introduction, okay? I don't know if you picked up on it yet, but almost every article in the document has an article introduction. That's there to help a reader understand this is what's in this article, this is, you know, how this article works and this is where you might go to find additional information in a supplemental document, okay? So every article has one of those in it. Now, there are 16 or so sections in Article Three. And again, development standards. So we cover access and circulation, right? So driveways, parking lot, cross access, how do pedestrians move around the site? We cover design standards, okay? How do buildings look, right? Multifamily buildings, mixed use buildings, non-residential buildings, both in downtown and outside of downtown. I will tell you that we have endeavored to focus solely on the most impactful aspects of building appearance and limit the regulations to just that. So we're trying to, to cut out the fat here. We're trying to get past the fluff and focus on the most impactful aesthetic aspects of the buildings. Now. I would expect you guys to have some thoughts as, as you begin to see this material, think about that, to, to enter into discussion with us about gee, Chad, why did you include that? Is that necessary? Do we need that? And that's an important discussion for us to have. I may say, yeah, I think you do need it, but you might be able to convince me that you don't. And like I said at the head of the conversation, there's nothing better than hearing ideas from other people and modifying our approach. So look forward to the discussion about the design standards with you. Have we gone too far? Have we not gone far enough? What other things should we be covering? We'll be looking to you for some, for your impact about that, your thoughts. Exterior lighting, okay? How much is too much? How tall are the lights? You know, am I getting, you know, light trespass on a single family residential site because of the gas station next door or not? How do we kind of handle that compatibility issue? Those are the things that exterior lighting standards control. And not just gas stations. I mean, it's also recreational facilities. You know, if you happen to live near a high school, then you know exactly what I'm talking about during football season. You know, there's lights out there and they stay on till 11, 12. Somebody forgot to turn them off, they're on all night. So exterior lighting standards are important. Fences and walls, where are they? How tall are they? Can they be in drainage esemes? Can they be in landscaping areas? Those kinds of questions are answered in the fences and wall provisions. Infrastructure, super important, you know, streets, water lines, sewer lines, public utilities, curb, gutter, sidewalk, that stuff.
Is in the infrastructure section.
Very, very important. Landscaping and screening, right? Parking lot landscaping, perimeter buffers between different zoning districts, streetscape landscaping or street trees depending upon where you are in the community, plus all of the enforcement and maintenance and all of those things that relate to landscaping material, plus screening, right? Screening your dumpsters, screening your outdoor storage, screening your service areas from adjacent residential uses, bringing up the quality of development for Reedsville, all right? Open space, private, common, open space. This isn't parkland. We, there, there's an expectation that new development will provide recreational facilities or at least open space.
As part of the development.
For folks who own or use that development, that's, that, that open space is for their use. Could they make it available to the public? Sure. But that's their choice, okay? This is an important move forward for Reedsville. It will create opportunities for people to have more recreation without concomitant costs to the city, okay? Owners associations, if you have things like common open space or stormwater facilities or private streets, you gotta have somebody who's responsible for it, okay? You guys own it, it's your job to keep, keep up with it, you pay to maintain it and it's got to be kept up to a minimum standard. The owners association provisions address that kind of material along with, hey developer, here's the rules when it comes time for you to transfer maintenance responsibility from yourself to the homeowners association so that they're ready and capable of accommodating the maintenance requirements that are necessary for those, for those infrastructure pieces, okay? Parking and loading, how many parking spaces do I need to have? Where are they required to be? How are they surfaced? Can I have any flexibility? What about loading? Those kinds of things are addressed in the parking and loading section. Pedestrian facilities covers sidewalks and greenways. I know that's a big one for, for some of you. We'll, we'll certainly address that stuff. Riparian buffers, creature of the state, state requires us to have riparian buffers on some streams that are associated with water supply watersheds, carrying those rules forward, updating where we can. Signage is a complex issue because there's been some changes at the federal level and those federal changes will have some impact on your sign regulations. And we will do our best when the time comes to talk about what those are, all right?
You said that again, that was, it's like state changes to sign.
It's like state changes to sign regulations. Say that, say that piece.
Federal.
Federal.
Federal. The United States Supreme Court weighed in a few years ago and said, local governments across this great nation of ours, if you have signed standards that are content-based, then you better be ready to defend in a court of law why they have to be content-based. Because here in America, we have freedom of speech. And so local governments are now trying to deal with, with ramifications of having sign regulations that are content-neutral, okay? No longer can we talk about commercial versus non-commercial signage. Can't do that anymore because we can't read the message on the sign. We're not allowed to regulate based on the message. Because regulating on your message is a content-based standard, which is not, not illegal, but very hard to defend, okay? So we can't talk about commercial, non-commercial. We can't talk about for lease, for rent. We can't talk about temporal aspects. We can't talk about, oh, that's a sign for a church. That's a sign for a restaurant. We can't talk about that either. We have to talk about time, place, manner. We have to talk about generic sign types. That's a wall sign. That's a ground sign. That's a projecting sign. That's how the sign regulations have to operate in light of this ruling from the Supreme Court. And you guys are in pretty good shape. There's a few things we need to change. Your diagrams could use a little help too. But you know, that'd be part of this.
Fun to have a sign with a sign in my business. So this is, this is interesting. I like this.
Well, you know, I, I would not expect dramatic change necessarily in sign size, sign number, sign location. I wouldn't expect a lot of change there. We're talking about adding some eleven basic sign flavors to your kind of palette of sign provision. We'll use your existing regulations where we can. If it's a new sign that you guys don't have today, then obviously there'll be some new standards. But our promise to you is to carry forward what we can of your current regulation. Not to create a situation where we've made a bunch of signs non-conforming and hopefully not to create a hornets nest of the, you know, the folks, the business community here who need their signs. Okay, because that's very, very important. I will say one last thing on signage. You will have more signage. I am sorry. The way that the, the changes in, in federal law work, everybody gets a sign. You want a sign, you get a sign. And that's it. Okay? And everybody gets a temporary sign. Okay? But how we think about what a temporary sign is might change a little bit. Mostly because we have to protect the fact that we got two people over here. They're awesome for sure, but there's only two of them, okay? And if we start regulating every temporary sign in the city, that's thousands and thousands of signs. If you want them to regulate those temporary signs, that's great, but they're not going to have time to do anything else. So we have to be careful about the rules that we write and how we enforce those. And we have that in mind as we're through these changes that we want to suggest in signage. Spent a lot of time on signage, but we haven't talked about it that much up to this point. There will be some changes there. Stormwater, there won't be a lot of changes there. That's primarily a state provision. You guys do, you're on the hook for some of the administration, you know, here in the, in the Jordan Lake watershed. You've, you've got some responsibilities that you're, you're on the hook for, but the state tells us what those are going to be and we sort of say, okay, glad to do that. Subdivision design, how do we lay subdivisions out? Where are the lots? Where are the streets? How do we do drainage easements, utility easements? Where do we have open space? And what are we allowed to be platted and what's not allowed to be platted? That's what the subdivision design standards handle. Finally, sustainability incentives. Important to see that word incentives. These are voluntary things that a developer may choose to use. They may choose to provide sustainable development features in their development. And if they do, then they get goodies from the city.
I liked this. I highlighted it. I liked it. That was good.
Maybe there's some minor density increases. Not major density increases. Maybe an extra unit an acre that they get for having sustainable development features. I'll tell you what some of those examples will be in a second. Maybe you get some extra building height. Maybe you get some relief from some of the parking standards. Maybe you get to have a slightly larger sign than what you might already have. Okay? So there's a lot of different ways that we can reward development for doing the kinds of things that we want to see here in Reedsville. So what do we want to see? So attainable housing? That's good. Greenways? We'd like to see that. High-quality development? Yeah. Energy conservation? Better stormwater management? Sure. These are all things that help the city. And to the extent that we can create a win-win where people get some minor increases or some minor relief for doing things that they're not required to do but that we really appreciate them doing, that's what the sustainability incentive stuff is all about. And I know the devil's in the details. You guys need to see it, you need to talk about it, see how it works. We give a lot of options. There's a handful of things that people can pick from in terms of their, their bonus or their, their, you know, their incentive. And we have a long, long list of ways to get there. Whether that's energy conservation or architecture or site configuration or how you deal with stormwater or some other aspects. Okay? Okay? Article Four is zoning districts, okay? As you know, cities organized into a series of zoning districts. This table is the Zoning District Translation Table. In other words, down the left column is what you have today.
Down the right side is what we would suggest.
The new UDO. And a couple of things should jump out at you. One is that there's really not that much change, right? You still, you have residential districts today. You're gonna have residential districts tomorrow. The names are a little different and we've got a consolidation here or there, but not a lot of change. Same with the non-residential districts. Except you see there's now two downtown districts, a core and a periphery. Why would we do that? Well, the core of downtown is very different than some of the neighborhoods that surround. And we want to recognize that distinction. We still want to, you know, encourage development in the downtown area. But we want to be more strategic about, you know, not everybody should have an eight-story building. Those should be focused in the core of the community. The periphery needs some flexibility. We understand that. But the, the, the building, the template, the size of buildings, the height of buildings is slightly different outside of your main street or your CBD. And so we want to, to better recognize that. Please.
So in the context of our downtown, we watch that and saying, if you look at South Skills Street, Gilmer, architecturally, you're looking at buildings built 100% of the lot area typically. So it's all over the lot of the property line of the building. And then you've got right on the sidewalk. If you look around the central business district, if you go down Main Street, you're gonna see some houses on the left, which were offices. You're gonna see some places with drive-throughs like Bangs. That's newer development that's distinct from what we have here. And so while we don't want to make them non-conforming, we don't want to change them, but you, you want to make sure that you maintain what we have in downtown with those traditional buildings with the sidewalk. So it's, it's more about distinguishing that and making sure that, you know, we have the uses here in downtown vulnerable, which may have different uses that have developed on periphery. So it's more about just making that distinction in our context of what has developed.
Thank you. Yeah, not all downtown is the same. There's different parts of downtown. And organizing the zoning districts to recognize that is helpful.
I like the acronym better than the numbers. That's, that's always been a little challenged for me on being a planning board. I used to always have to look up RA twenty versus R twenty versus RS twelve versus R twelve. I mean, I like the, just the acronym. That is what it is. That makes more sense to me in my brain anyway.
Just another thing on this working down is that will require a zoning map amendment. We will be bringing forward a new zoning map showing that where the distinction will be made downtown. We're gonna approach the, you know, everyone, make sure everyone knows what's going on. Like it's just, you're going to know that anything changes. It's distinguishing South Skills in this area from the periphery and the uses that are there.
Well, it doesn't, it, personally, from a person who owns a business and the weirdness that it is now, I mean, it does, it does matter a lot. Because right now, it's a very strange little, what is actually considered downtown and what's considered not. I'm like one street, I'm opposite institutional, but yet I'm not considered downtown. And it's, it's a, it's a little kind of weird border. So it'd be interesting to see how we work it out because it matters to what kind of like, we weren't eligible for some grants because we were on the opposite side of this. So it's, it, it does, it does matter to a lot of different businesses that kind of straddle that, those two things. So I'm interested in how it works out.
It's in the Bay Area of Main Street. So what's on this side of Main Street is, that's where the central business district starts, is across from you. So on the side of Main Street.
Right, well, but, but on, but say the bank on the same side of Main Street with me on the other side of Lindsay is downtown. So it's like a little bit, yes, yeah. So it, it's, it's, it's a little weird.
More discussions for you guys in the future.
So it'd be interesting to see how we work that out.
Indeed, indeed. A couple of other things I'll note for you on this table. One is a little bit of a departure from how you do business today. And that is the conditional zoning districts. Right now, today, you have what we call parallel zoning districts. So for every conventional zoning district that you've got, there's a corresponding parallel conditional district, okay? We would suggest that that's overly clunky, not necessary. And we would suggest a couple of changes to that. First of which is establishment of some more generic convention, conditional districts, like a conditional residential or a conditional mixed-use or a conditional industrial, something like that. And we don't need to worry so much about, is this R six? Is it R twelve? Is it R fifteen? Who cares? It's conditional, okay? There are some basic standards that you have, right? Some basic dimensional requirements, some basic density provisions and a litany of uses that are allowed in that district. And that's what you work with.
Look at this table and I see that there's a condensation of the existing density into the conditional residential CPR. The ones that they, it's been folded into, went from a density of R six to R twelve. I guess my question, how do you manage the density that you wish to maintain in those zoning areas?
Right. It's a great question.
Rather than just being some willy-nilly decision made by whomever and it's just rubber stamped by virtue of the zoning.
It's a great question. So two ways. One is we establish a basic underlying residential density that is the starting point for discussion, okay? In a, in a conditional zoning context. Then, an applicant has an opportunity to say, I, I'll take that. That density sounds acceptable to me. Or I wish not to use that density. I wish to use a different density, okay? That density that they choose could be higher or could be lower, okay? If it's lower, we don't care. You have a lower density, that's fine. If it's higher, we care quite a bit and we want you to submit a master plan to us. And we want to have a detailed discussion with you about what you're proposing and what that looks like and how that's going to fit in the place that you're proposing it. And so that's our proposed approach. This is, is a much more modern approach. You have lots of other governments in your area who are using this sort of generic conditional district approach to things with a base density as a starting point and a recognition that an applicant can stay below it and we, we don't care, that's great, or go above it. But those applications that seek to go above it have a higher level of scrutiny associated with them.
Does that, does that mean it comes to the planning board?
Absolutely. It's a resign.
It's a resign request, right?
So it would be like a, um, for me, like a planning unit development, obviously it's probably, but we're not doing it that way. We're doing it through conditional zoning because the general assembly is gonna be a lot easier to just use conditional zoning instead of going through the process. So if they're gonna deviate from some kind of standard, then of course it has to come before, just like what happened tonight. Same thing, what y'all have, what y'all made a decision on that.
That's what I was talking about tonight. You know, you've got a medium-density neighborhood. We're gonna plot down a high-density thing right in the middle of it. That's, that's what I was getting at tonight.
And that's what the board will be reviewing when these things come in, they're proposing a conditional zoning district as a plan. And they're going to do that, so.
The, the one thing I want to leave you with on this conditional zoning issue is very, very important. And here it is. If somebody wants to deviate from the standards, whether that's go higher than what's allowed or provide less than what's required, there is a test that they have to pass, okay? In your mind and in the mind of your elected officials. And the test is, this development as it's proposed is in closer alignment with our purpose and intent statements or results in a higher quality of development than would otherwise result from a strict application of the standards. That is the applicant's burden to prove to you. So if somebody wants to propose a development that has higher density smack dab in the middle of a lower-density area, they need to explain to you how that's better. Well, how is this better? Is, you know, am I getting affordable housing out of this? Are you giving me more open space? Is the design quality better? Now, it's true, we can't talk about price so much. That's kind of off the table for us. But we can talk about quality. We can talk about amenities. We can talk about, you know, design. Once we're in the conditional realm, we have the ability to negotiate, to discuss, you know, to apply our legislative discretion, okay? Which is a much broader ability than a strict application of the standards like you might see with a, with a special use permit. So this approach will give you some more flexibility. It will result in more negotiation for those kinds of developments that choose to use the, the type three, the negotiated process, the, the one I ask for if I want to deviate from the standards, okay? We have a couple other flavors in here. For folks who, I don't need all of those bells and whistles. I just want to follow the rules, but I only want to have one use. I don't, I don't need the full litany of allowable uses in this conventional zoning district. I want to do the one thing that I want to do and that's it. And I'll, I will limit my application to that one use. And that's it. And they should have a pretty easy process as long as that use is allowable in the district. You know, we don't need to go through all this negotiation and concept plans and la, la, la. Here's the one use, okay. Great, let's talk about it. Is this acceptable? Yes, no, and we move on. For those folks who are looking for a reduction, looking for a deviation, we're gonna talk about it. You're gonna need to convince me. Show me why this is better. Explain. And this setup creates that, that opportunity. And it's, it's outwardly clear in the code that the applicant's responsibility, their burden, is to prove to you how this is better. And because it's a legislative decision, you're not held within the evidentiary guardrails that you might have to follow through a quasi-judicial process. We don't need to worry about the findings of fact. We don't have to worry about conclusions of law. We have our legislative discretion. And that's more open-ended. It's more flexible.
They add the special uses, is what you're saying.
Right. We're, we're moving away from that and into this legislative discretion realm. And, you know, I sort of trot it out here as the greatest thing since sliced bread, but know that nothing in life is as it seems. You know, there's a plus and a minus associated with that legislative discretion. We'll have more requirements to labor over, right? To think about. This guy says this is the better development. Do I agree? Well, I don't know. And, you know, that, there's, there's, there is some more heavy cognitive lifting that comes with this. It's not just, you know, push the easy button. So I, I want you to understand that, you know, you are with, what is it saying? With great power comes great responsibility.
Spider man.
Right. And so you're going to have this authority to, to sit in judgment. Is this a better project or not? And, you know, we have some parameters here, but this is still a decision making process that you'll have to engage in. So will city council, you know? And they're going to depend on your, your recommendation. You know, Chad says this thing's the greatest thing since sliced bread. Council, we looked at it, we're not so sure. We think this, we think that. Maybe we suggest, you know, this applicant do this instead. And that's how the conditional process is supposed to work. Okay? So kind of next level stuff, kind of growing up a little bit. Okay. Uh, last thing on the table are some overlay districts. Um, you already have these, they're just not characterized as overlay districts. You've got a local historic overlay that's going to be carried forward. We're not changing that. You've got some flood rules, that's not going to change. Those are federal. You've got some water supply watershed protection rules. Those are state rules. They're not going to change, but we are going to treat them as overlay districts because that's easier for us to manage. Okay? Okay. Article five is land uses. This is that big honking table. Okay? All of the material associated with uses lives in article five. And so there are three kinds of uses. There are principal uses, secondary uses and temporary uses. What is the difference? A principal use is the main use on the lot. So in a single family detached residential district, the principal use of a lot is a single family home. Okay? What's a secondary use? A secondary use is something that is on the same lot as a principal use that is for the purpose of supporting that principal use. How about a detached garage? How about a swimming pool? How about a shed? Those are examples of secondary uses that you might see in a single family detached residential district. Okay? What about a temporary use? Okay, so, you know, maybe you're going to move, right? Maybe you're moving to a nicer house in Reedsville because we've got more choices for you to choose from and you don't have to move to Greensboro to find what you're looking for. What a concept. You might get a temporary portable storage container to put your stuff in. And so you're going to take a couple of days to load that. And that's going to sit in your driveway while you're loading it. It is a temporary use. Okay? So that's the, the, the framework of this. And it's not just for single family detached. These things also exist for non residential uses, right? So like a Target, okay? Better yet, a Walmart, okay? For those of you who are big Walmart shoppers, you know they have a Christmas layaway thing. That's big for them, okay? When you do a layaway thing, they take your goods and they put them in a great big giant trailer in the back of the building. It's usually a shipping container. They stack them three or four high and that's where that stuff sits until you've paid for it. Okay? That is an example of an accessory use, that extra storage that happens. Same kind of concept, it's just on a non residential level. This article deals with principal accessory and temporary uses comprehensively. Okay? The table that you see, this is a screenshot from the first page of the principal use table. And so it's got the districts across the top, the uses down the side. We've organized this into five use classifications, agricultural, industrial, institutional, commercial, residential. No great shakes there. Each one of these use classifications is further broken down into its different use categories. Retail, office, personal service. And under those are the individual use types themselves. In the cells of the table, there's either a dot, a P, which is permitted by right, an S, I got to go get a special use permit to do this, or a C. C means it's allowed in one of those conditional zoning districts. So I could do this use as part of a rezoning to one of the generic conditional zoning districts that are listed in the table. Okay? The last column in the table has a couple of brackets. That's a placeholder for the use specific standards. Most of the hundred and thirty or so uses that you see in that table will have use specific standards associated with them. That's a cross reference to it. So you'll be able to click on that and be taken to those standards. Now, just all kinds of yellow lines in this thing. What the heck is that? What are the yellow rows? The yellow rows are your current uses, okay? Those do not get carried forward in the adopted UDO. They are solely there for your comparison, to review what's being suggested against what the rules are today.
Okay, so like, so for example, so the restaurant line, all those things on yellow underneath the restaurant, we don't need those anymore, it's just a restaurant.
Correct, exactly.
Right, just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes, we are trying to simplify.
Okay, got it.
You know, there, there's no reason to have doctor's office, dentist's office, surveyor's office, insurance agent office. When just office, that'll do it? Maybe you need to have busy office, not so busy office. And maybe that's enough. Right?
Sure.
So those would be the suggestions that we're, we're trying to make here. Let's, let's cast a broader net, capture the newer, modern uses that are out there that are not in your current regulation. Let's stop making needless distinctions between use types that we, that, you know, we permit in the same districts under the same procedures anyway. Right? Your industrial, your industrial uses are a great example. Line after line after line of all of these industrial uses. The permit procedure is the same. The districts where they're allowed are the same. It's not necessary to, to, to slice and dice this, this way. Um, it's extra information that's just not needed when you can say, that's an industrial use. Okay? Now, um, that, those are the principal uses. You can expect a similar table, won't be as long, and a similar approach to the secondary uses. There's some general standards that we apply as secondary uses wherever they may be. Some districts where they're permitted, some secondary uses will require a special use permit. Okay? So for example, let's say for the sake of argument that we've got this new downtown periphery district. And I'm just, I'm just throwing an example out across, off the top of my head. I don't know what we're ultimately going to do. But some places, Reedsville included, might decide, well, we're going to permit drive through facilities in the downtown periphery, but you're going to have to get a special use to do it. Okay? So that's kind of the thinking. Across the street, there's a bank with a drive through, right? I don't know if it's in downtown core or downtown periphery. But generally speaking, conventional planning wisdom is in your downtown, you want to be pedestrian oriented, not necessarily vehicle oriented. Okay? So we want to have an extra level of scrutiny for auto oriented aspects in some parts of town. Ergo, we might use a special use permit for a drive through in a particular location. And there's other examples. I'm just, you know, that was just kind of what, what came across the top of my head. You'll see this in the table and then obviously it'll be open for discussion as we go forward. Gee Chad, I think that maybe we should have a special use for that accessory or that secondary use or not. Okay?
But it seems overall in this table, we're trying to get rid of as much of the special use permits as possible.
Yes. Yes, yes, we are. Uh, and for good reason. Because here's the thing on special use permits. If it's permitted as a special use in a particular zoning district, it is what's called presumptively valid. In other words, that use is permitted. Okay? You can't say no unless it doesn't meet the standards. So.
You made this point earlier, and that is that with changes, it's going to require more effort on our part to consider whether or not this is in line with what we want going on within our community. Within that, it would seem to be, seem, with that extra effort, it remains, it seems that we're going to have to be very diligent about making sure that we know what we want and what we're going to allow. Because these zoning regulations is going to be broader in terms of more consolidated. Have you seen any possibility of, um, somebody sliding something through? There's always going to be somebody that's going to try to get over and get what they want. Regardless of what the rules say or apply. Have you seen anything where this system that you're providing has a hole in it that allows that kind of thing to happen?
Great question. Um, ha- have I seen that? Yes, there are local governments, even in North Carolina. Even in the triangle, even that start with the letter R, that their planning boards spend years on text amendments, gaming out all of the possibilities, all the potential scenarios that all of the great minds can think up, years on these things. And then they ultimately adopt them. Okay? And that's great. Um, if you want to have a text amendment once every six or seven years. Okay? I, what I would posit to you is this. You are absolutely right, there's always somebody out there able to, a, a, willing and able to game the system. And there's always somebody smarter than you, always, always, always. You're going to get things that come through in this UDO that aren't what you want. And it's going to happen and you're going to be like, mm, I can't believe that happened. And you, you, you recognize that, you learn from it, you honor that that wasn't what you wanted, but you couldn't stop it because you didn't realize that was coming. And you change your rules in accordance with that so that it doesn't happen again. And that is how it works. If you want to take the other approach and spend six or seven years working on every text amendment, you can do that. But at the end of the day, your level of productivity will be much lower and you will have learned much less.
Yes, I think that was, in my opinion, as a business owner, was part of the problem of what we're trying to change here in Reedsville. Is that there was too much attention to being worried that like this one person was going to do something bad and there were just so many text amendments and so many special use permits and so many regulations and so much scrutiny that businesses were like, I don't want to deal with that.
Right, I'm out of here.
So, right, so, so I think, uh, making things more streamlined and efficient is going to be way better for business and way better for the town in general.
Yeah, it, it will. And, and, you know, I mean, I'm not going to tell you that, that, you know, it's, it's, it's sunshine and rainbows every time.
Sure.
There's going to be those people out there who are very smart and get paid a lot of money to come into towns like this and skirt the rules. And, you know, that's going to happen because it happens everywhere. And you can either recognize that and be on your guard for that or you can say, we're going to build walls around this ordinance that are impenetrable and you're going to keep out the good stuff too. Good question. I really appreciate that. It's a, it's, it's a very, uh, it's a seasoned question. I know you're new, but that's a very, that's a question that a very seasoned person would ask. Because a lot of people go through this process and they tend to these things, they think, well, we've got to think about all the possibilities. No, you don't. You don't. What you have to do is recognize that you need some safety valves, you need some flexibility, some things are going to get through that you didn't love, but, you know, that's just, at the end of the day, that's just life in the big city. And you learn from it and you move on. Right? Okay. Article six is measurement. Back to the boring stuff, but I can't tell you enough about how important it is to talk about, how do we measure setbacks? How do we measure height, right? On a triangular shaped lot, what's the rear lot? The UDO will say, right? But not just basic measurement, also how do the standards work? Right? When we say, you know, this shrub has to be six feet tall or has this size caliper or this is how we calculate sign face area or this is how we determine parking lot size. Those kinds of things are set down in the measurement article. They're very, very important. It is not sexy, it is not exciting, it is necessary. And your staff will be very happy to have it. The vast majority of lawsuits turn on stuff like this, not on rezoning cases. Okay? So we try to deal with that stuff very, very methodically. Article seven, nonconformities. These are lots or uses or structures that used to meet the rules, right? They were okay when we built them or they were built before we had rules. Right? How do we handle that now? We got to have districts everywhere, we got to have dimensional standards, we got to have these rules. What do we do about these outliers that don't fit? They used to be okay, but now they're not. How do we accommodate that? How do we encourage them to be maintained? How do we prevent them from falling into disrepair or creating rules that disincentivize people from redeveloping them? Right? That's an important part of success downtown is I can come in and I can operate a business and make a change and don't have to come into 100% full compliance. Because it's, you know, infeasible. The pro forma won't work. And if the pro forma won't work, guess what? I'm not coming to downtown. So nonconformities help us address those kinds of situations. And we want to encourage and incentivize redevelopment without stipulating requirements for full compliance in every instance. Okay? Trying to bring a little bit of common sense to this. I, I, I'm not a big fan of that phrase because common sense differs, it's very subjective. But the idea is let's encourage redevelopment. Let's, let's recognize that things were built before we had these new rules and they have the right to, to continue, right? And, and hopefully grow and change. So that's what article seven does. Article eight is our violations. How do we enforce all these rules? What are the violations? What's the process that we use if somebody has broken the rules? What's the process we use to determine if somebody's broken the rules? How does that work? And how do we assess fines or fees in those instances? That's what article eight handles for us. Not just rezoning, but also for environmental provisions. And then finally, article nine, word usage, abbreviations. You know, how many times have we looked at a document and been like, LDR, what the heck does that mean? Or, you know, the, the FEMA rules are notoriously bad for multiple letter acronyms that make no sense at all. Abbreviations table that sets that down so you can instantly go and find out. I'm looking for, you know, what is a clomer? What is that? And that'll be set down in your abbreviations table. Language construction, what's the difference between Shell and May? How do we calculate days of the week? What does delegation mean? That's the kinds of stuff that language construction deals with. And then finally, terms defined. You'll probably have about a hundred pages of definitions, um, which is good. It's what you want. Unless you're forced to read them, in which case maybe you don't love a hundred pages. But very, very important. These things about measurement and definitions and enforcement, you know, that's the stuff that keeps you out of court. That's the good stuff. Um, it's not most exciting, but it's the most necessary. All right? Last article is the appendices. This is like that, you remember at the beginning I talked about that, about this UDO section that could be FAQs and stuff like that? This appendancy is not part of the codified ordinance. It's attached, it's in the same document, but it is not black letter law. It is supporting information. And it includes things like what do you have to have on your site plan? What do you have to have on your, on your, you know, conditional rezoning master plan? What do you have to have on, on your subdivision plat? Okay? In a table form, so it's easy to follow. Certificates and declarations, when you do a subdivision in North Carolina, there's all of this boilerplate language that you have to have on the face of the plat, depending upon what kind of plat it is and what you're proposing and how it's organized. And that information has to be made available for the surveyor, the person who's preparing the plat. Okay? So that's what the certificates and declarations section is. Now, you could put other things in this appendices, right? You could put plant lists, you could put some other things. So it's a placeholder for you to put things that are development related, right? They're akin to your development regulations, but they're not law per se. Okay? All right. That was an awful lot to throw at you, I know. That is your whole UDO. When it comes to you, it's probably going to be 500 or 600 pages, um, which is a little bit longer than what you've got now. Uh, but to be fair, we are bringing some material over from your city code that's not currently in your regulation. You're going to have a whole lot more illustrations. You have a lot more definitions. And so it's just more. And so be on, be, be ready for that. Any questions or discussion about this?
Two questions, one of them has been somewhat answered.
Okay.
So the decrease in five year to three year terms is a state.
Statute.
Statute. Is it still going to be limited to two terms? And I have a reason why I'm asking this, but.
I think that's a policy matter.
Okay, so that is not within the state ordinance? Because, I mean, for example, our, our lovely new member here, I mean, that seat's been empty for almost three years. It's, we have a hard time, I mean, have a hard time finding people to fill seats. And so if we're going to decrease the terms, we're going to have to find people to fill seats more often.
Indeed.
And so that's why I'm wondering is, okay, we decreased the terms from five to three years and that gives people the opportunity to retire off easier if they don't want to do it anymore. But can it be, can you serve three terms, for example, instead of two?
That would be something we'll look at.
That'll be something we'll look at in the city code.
Yeah, so that was one question.
So it'll be referenced here, but it's actually covered in the city code, and we're in this with all the other stuff. This is just the UDO, so, you know, we'll have to consider when we make that change for the term.
Okay.
So do we get grandfathered in, since we are five-year terms when we start?
Yeah, I was asking, Thomas.
Someone like me who's been on it now for very close to six years altogether, have I exceeded my limit?
That's why I would, I would suggest thinking about three.
We may, nothing's set in stone now.
Right. But that's why I wanted to throw out the consideration of three terms instead of two terms, just because it is so difficult to...
I understand.
I mean, we've, it's been a challenge for us to find. We have a really, we have a really great group right now, and, and, yeah, several of us are, would be kind of fallen into that.
We'll discuss it.
Right.
We have to change that.
For stability and...
And if you're around for seven years, I don't think the black helicopters are going to come up, and guys are going to go.
Come down and clear away.
I don't think that's true.
Some days I'm just doing that.
And they're special use permits.
They may have been one of those days.
And so my second question is about the special use permits. It's partially, it's partially answered, but the logic behind, and I apologize because I wasn't here in December, so, because of my foot, but I understand there's going to be certainly less special use permits.
Yes.
Running through, and I, and I completely agree with that concept. However, what was the thinking of where it's going to now be bypassing planning, boarding, going straight to city council?
Sure. It's a great question. And, you know, maybe you'll think it's a great answer, maybe you won't, but here's the thinking. The statute is very clear about the fact that the decision maker on a special use permit application may only base their decision on the testimony and evidence that is provided during the hearing process where the decision is made, okay? They cannot rely on an outside recommendation from a planning board, and if they do, that's a violation of the law.
So why then couldn't they just come to Board of Adjustment? Because we are quasi-judicial.
That's a, that's a policy matter.
Okay. All right, and that answers my question.
Policy matter.
So you're saying it could?
It could, yes, it could come to Board of Adjustment, then. All right, great.
Um, I chair the Board of Adjustment for Durham City County. Now, the, our city council hears, we, we have a special level of hell over there. We have major and minor special use permits.
Yes, you do.
Board of Adjustment handles the minor special use permits, city council handles the major, okay? So there's a lot of different ways to slice and dice this, but, you know, can the Board of Adjustment be the body that's designated to hear special use permits? Answer is yes. That's, that's within the statute.
You're answering questions like that. All right.
Okay.
Something to think about, Don.
We'll send all the hard ones to council.
Okay, couple more slides, and then I'm done. Do you guys have any other questions about the, the annotated outline? Remember, it's our dress rehearsal, we're, you know, what you see is, is gonna be a lot of what you get, there's a lot more detail that needs to come, okay? Don't get me wrong, this is very, very high level.
It's an outline, so, I'm sorry. What is the next installment of this growing volume of material?
What a fabulous question. Let's talk about that.
We're gonna get it in chunks or not.
I didn't realize you were gonna ask that question.
So, the next step.
Task four is drafting of the UDO, and the way that the, the contract is structured and our approach is as follows. We're going to prepare an internal draft for staff, and that's very common, very typical, okay? An internal draft of the entire document is prepared for staff, it's given to them for review, they look at it, they're looking for landmines, they're looking for things that we did wrong, or issues or concerns that they have from a policy standpoint that they'll point out to us. We will have the conversations with staff about things that they would suggest be changed, we will make those revisions, and there'll be a red line of that information that's made available for anybody who wants to look at it, okay? When we have made the changes that staff suggests to the draft UDO, we will release it to you. And you will have not enough time to look at it, and we will then schedule at least two meetings with you to go over it. Now, how we structure those meetings, totally up to you. We can either go through the whole thing twice, or we can split it in half and do half at the first meeting, half at the next meeting. So give that some thought. Again, I told you, you're, you're looking at five or 600 pages here, all right? And while I believe we are some awesome writers, I recognize that this is not exactly that I'm reading. It's, it's, can be dense, it, it's very technical, and it's just not as much fun as a John Grisham novel, and we understand that. But nonetheless, you guys are stuck having to review it, and we hope that you'll do that very, very carefully. Our plan is to release this public draft to you in July, okay? And we'll have a couple of meetings. I've shown on this slide that we have these meetings in August. That might be overly optimistic. We might need to have a meeting in August, and then an additional meeting in September, okay? We don't want to overwhelm you, but sometime, we need to get through this material, we need to get your recommendation on it. The statutes require this body to make a formal recommendation about the draft language to city council before they consider it, okay? Also, you guys will be the keepers of this, this document in, in the future, and you'll be the body that thinks about, what do we need to be changing and why, okay? So, when we come back to talk to you in a few months, we're going to work with staff and try to find some ways to soften the blow and make it as, as comfortable as we can. You might want to consider a slightly different format, maybe we're seated at a table, maybe you want to stay at a dais, whatever, we're comfortable however you want to do it. Maybe you want to incorporate a lunch or a dinner in the middle of it, so you might want to meet for some, a little bit longer, you know, an hour or two is, you know, I mean, we're talking about going over 250 pages of events material. Not line by line, but still. So I, I would encourage you and encourage your staff to, to, at the minimum, give you guys some cookies, so that we can keep the energy level going.
I would say starting late at six o'clock at night may not be a good...
Indeed, indeed. That's another option, if that's workable for you. We'll do whatever, you know, to, to, to ease this, but, you know, these, this pair of meetings that are coming on reviewing this draft document, believe me, this is a heavy lift, and we need you guys to, to come ready and, and to, to engage. And so that's, that's our next step. That's what's coming. July, we hope to have this document in your hands, you'll have the full document, which is, that doesn't happen that often. A lot of planning boards are asked to review this thing in sections, and people always complain about it. And so we're gonna see how it works if we give you the whole thing, and see if you complain about that. It'll be an interesting sort of study for me. Every time I give these things to people, I, I always hear, well, I can't read this because I don't have this section, or I don't have that chapter, or whatever, and y'all aren't going to be able to say that, you're gonna have the whole thing. So we'll see.
I mean, personally, this is what I expected when we were, I was wondering about this big gap since December, so this is what I expected. So to sit, for us to be sitting around a table with some cookies and like hashing this out. I mean, this, this is my, this is my expectation, so I'm happy about this. Not just having, sit here, maybe just have a presentation, I really want it to be...
Absolutely.
Hands-on.
I think around the table is a great idea, because I hear it, it's just...
Yeah. More of a work group than just, we're sitting here getting a presentation. Right, yes. That's, that's my expectation, anyway.
Okay, very good.
Just as a personal opinion, y'all have done a hell of a good job with this thing. I, I really like it.
Oh, good, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad that, you know, we're moving in the right direction. I hope that you'll be happy with, you know, the, the product that's coming. It's, we, we take great, great pride in the work that we produce, it's, we obviously don't look for the money, so it's, it's important that, that folks are happy with it. And with that, I guess if there's anything else that you guys would like me to cover otherwise, or if you have questions, otherwise I'm, I'm wrapped up.
Like Chad said, we're shooting for adoption, maybe, maybe September, maybe, and maybe for your board of recommendation in November, depending on how we go, August through October, we'll have three months roughly to, to go through the UDO, so we'll see how that goes. And this will get us through quickly, then going article, 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 article.
Yeah, that's Chinese water torture, believe me.
No further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys, look forward to our summertime extravaganza.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director's report.
From last month, we didn't have anything to the council last month, except for our recognition, Drew is officially, well, we're still waiting on the county to accept it, but council appointing Drew as a private view officer to reviewing subdivision plats, recomендation plats, so, congrats to Drew.
Congratulations.
Really proud of her, she's made so much progress and grown so much capacity, I really applaud her. Yeah.
You did a great job, Drew.
She does a great job. So, yeah, so that's all I have, nothing really big to report on, other than, well, they are grading off for the apartments on Holly Hills, I don't know if anyone else knew that. Still waiting on the building permit, so we're just staying on the edge of our seat, waiting for the building permit. We have, oh, yeah, I have another guy, I remember he didn't have a bean last month. We have approved the phase one plan for the Clarkson Preserve building, 149 single family houses.
Off mark.
Libri Road.
Libri Road.
Libri Road.
What was that?
That's right, my boy.
Okay, I got you.
Yes.
This is the D. I. Horton.
It is, yes.
Yes.
So 149 in the first phase, they're looking to start infrastructure construction this summer, we're still waiting on their construction plans from the engineer to go to the, that's the other part, it's not the planning, they just have to review like the stormwater, the roads, all that good stuff, so, just waiting on that, and see, I don't think of anything else.
I haven't commented anything really.
Well, the bakery, Sub-Oaks, a Whirl Baker has opened, it's in front of Macy's last time, sort of come up for that. Whirl Baker has opened, another bakery, the...
Pearl Creek.
Pearl Creek, yes.
There's a couple of retail places on scales that have opened, there's a military surplus, retail places on scales, a military surplus, there's one of them, there's been a couple of smalls.
Are these bakeries?
Right.
Bakeries here, downtown.
We're also in the city council.
There are about three, I think there are.
Any comments, any more about things that are happening?
Well, I did officially move, I guess I need to let HR know, but I still, I still live in the city, I live on Country Club Drive now.
Oh.
Did you buy Star and Peters' house? Did you buy Star and Peters' house?
I did.
Did you buy Star and Peters' house?
I did.
Ah, how about that? That's wonderful. I was like, wow, I'm like, wait a minute.
Wait till my kids get ahold of it, they'll probably destroy it.
He bought Star and Peters' house.
Yeah, I knew he did.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a, I enjoyed, it's a very nice house.
Yes, it's a beautiful house.
Really nice house.
It's a really beautiful house, yeah.
It is, it's nice.
Anything else?
So excited we've got the ATJ position for you.
I know. I mean, that was my point about the three, I mean, I've been up for, I've been up for two and a half years, and this, and that your seat's been open the entire time.
It has been open longer than that. All I would say to that is, we need to be aware of the fact that position's gonna come open, we need to start grooming people, identifying people, you know, in advance, so we don't have a vacancy.
We try.
Agree with you 100%.
Who got you home, Meredith? For this, did Meredith put you up to it?
No.
One over there.
Oh, it was Mr. Corrigan.
Good, good choice.
Good choice.
If I died.
No more comments, I guess we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Save it.
Motion's made, second in favor, please say aye.
Aye.